Okay, I call to order the regular board meeting for Monday, May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Call, roll call please.
Laczynski.
Here.
Here now.
Here.
Lamb, here. Mr. Fenuken and Mr. Kraft are unavailable.
Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of America.
Okay, we will start off with our mission statement. We educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives, and to contribute to society. And our vision statement. The Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered, learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven, continuous improvement through our strategic planning process, and tangible results. And I want to thank you all for being here. It's nice to see so many people in a cool room. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. First time we just had three people, so. Roll call please.
Lamb, yes. Here now.
Yes.
Laczynski.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You guys are gonna have a lot of work tonight. Think you got it. Moving and seconding. Okay, Dr. Goggins, you want to take it over for the retiree?
Absolutely. A couple things here. I just want to read all of the retirees by building to recognize them. You don't have to stand up or anything because the camera can't see you anyway, so I will just read your names. So from Westlake High School, we have Dave Roushaw, Mark Trushon, Carol Yellick, Toby Barfincheck, Barvincheck, Greg Henderson, and Colleen Stanley from Lee Bernison Middle School. From Dover Intermediate School, we have Dave Bosch, Trish Kosick, Jan Schmidt, and Teresa Zabo. From Westlake Elementary School, Tina Fautes, Laura Keen, and Kim McHugh. From our Board of Ed office up here, we have Linda Apple and Larry Mattis. And from our Transportation Department, Carol Flannick, Sandy Hauser, Randy Cager, and Sherry West, and Lori Whiting. Many times when we talk about these retirees, or when we talk about retirees in general, we talk about the numbers. And in this case, as Mr. Maber mentioned earlier in our other reception, we're looking at five hundred and sixteen years of service from the twenty-one people who are retiring. That's an impressive number. And when you think about that and you look at the amount of time that has been dedicated, that's one thing. What's more impressive is what actually occurred during that time. The amount of time and hours that were spent in classroom, on buses, in different facilities within our school district. And that's just staggering of everything that was contributed. I mentioned we just held an event in the other room, and you may hear some comments about that online because that room was not air-conditioned, and this is, so we're enjoying this much better. But what really stood out, what really stood out, you could talk about somebody's position, what building they were in, all of those kind of things. But the most impressive to hear were the stories, the friendships, and the pride that all of these retirees, retirees have in what they've given to our students and to our community. I have to mention this each time I think about retirees because I've been in this business for thirty-one years. So I've seen a lot of retirement classes go, and you see people come back to events. And here's what usually happens. They come back, they look younger, more rested, and so happy with everything that's going on. And this is what you usually hear. So if you talk to retirees, so I think I saw we have a couple retirees here. This is what you usually hear from them. Couple things. I don't know how I ever had time to work. That's the first one. How did I ever fit it in? And the second one is, I'm just as busy as before, but now I'm busy with what I want to do and not what I have to do. So congratulations to all of you at reaching this point in your career, and thank you for all you've done for the Westlake City Schools.
I just want to say, don't even think about coming back and subbing, because you won't have eyes. It is fun. My pet phrase is, there's nothing not to like about being retired, so enjoy. Truly, congratulations to our retirees, and thank you for all your years of service.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, well, I'll let you take over.
Okay, so we're gonna do the library now?
No.
Oh, the Excellence Awards, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, we'll do the Excellence Awards, and then we can dismiss our, most of our visitors, and then take it from there.
Okay.
All right, so to start off our Excellence, so to give you an explanation of our Excellence Awards, in the fall and the spring, Mrs. Hoffman, who just stuck her head in and left, she usually sends out a form for people to nominate someone from our certified staff, which would be a teacher, school counselor, school psychologist. I'm missing others, I'm sorry, speech pathologist, all of them. And then our Excellence and Classified Staff, which would include our teacher aides, custodians, bus drivers, and that. And it's really great getting these, because when you receive these, you get to read all of these stories. And really, it's funny, you kind of read the stories that you'll end up hearing at retirement as well, because this is when the memories are being made. And they're really fun to go through, and it's amazing how many great staff members we have here and how much their colleagues appreciate them. And so it's really the highlight to be able to read those things. And so what we're going to do now is, we're gonna take a minute, or a few minutes, and we're gonna recognize the two thousand and twenty-four Spring Excellence Award recipients. And we are going to start with Mr. Corey Rojek, who will be presenting to Lisa Hunt. So here's the part about it, is you actually have to go stand next to him. And, yes, and because we also know, one of the things we also know is that people generally, when they're recognized, don't want to be recognized, so it's kind of fun to make them stand next to them and hear nice things about themselves. So, Corey, take it.
All right, Lisa, I'm allowed to speak now. I'm happy to be here tonight to honor Lisa Hunt with this award for the excellence in classified service. I first met Lisa a couple years ago when I had her son in class as a student at Lee Bernison Middle School. And I could tell immediately that Lisa was very caring and passionate about her children. Now, having had the opportunity to work with her at the high school for one year as an assistant principal, I could see that the passion and desire that she has for her own kids extends to the students at Westlake High School. And as Dr. Goggins said, she doesn't seek out the accolades, she's not asking for pats on the back. She does it because she loves what she does. As some of you may not know, she served as a one-on-one aide for a student at Westlake High School for the last two years who was blind. Over the last two years, Lisa has helped to translate all of the students' documents, both on Google Classroom paperwork into Braille. The process of converting all this, as you can imagine, takes a lot of time. And she does a great job with it. In addition to this, you could see Lisa over the last few years helping guide the student around the school in between lunch periods, between classes, while at the same time giving this student the independence that they also want at the same time. And that's really a tough line to balance between being a guide around the school, but also giving the power and the freedom of independence while doing that. The relationship that Lisa and the student and the family have built has been amazing. The parents gifted her a T-shirt that says, Mrs. Hunt, in both standard text and Braille. But she does wear it around the school proudly, I can vouch for that. This coming weekend, the student asked her to accompany him across the stage when he receives his high school diploma, which is surely gonna be an amazing moment for both the student and Lisa. Also, Lisa puts countless hours into work with the marching band, which is when you see her in the fall. She is busy, busy, busy working there. She serves as the head chaperone for all home and away football games, riding the bus, does the fittings for all of the band members each year, and having to know who grew out of their uniform and who hasn't, which seems like a really hard thing to do with how many kids are in that. Every summer, she spends two to three days a week at the school, making sure all the uniforms are ready to go in August. Whether it be working with students, or during the school day, or with the marching band, Lisa is truly one of a kind, and it is no surprise that she is the recipient of the Excellence in Classified Service Award.
I just want to thank you for such a nice award. I work with some amazing people. And I've had experiences with a lot of people, and even at the high school, so I love what I do. I'm gonna miss my student tremendously because he's, you know, going off into the world. It's been really, it's just been a really fun experience with him and for all the students that I've worked with. And the marching band love every single one of the kids. They're just, you know, they're amazing. And it's why I do what I do, because they're just an amazing group of kids to be around, so. But thank you so much for such a wonderful honor. Thank you to Kathleen and everybody, so.
I'd like to say that your student was recognized Thursday night at the high school, received an award, and I'm sure that your efforts went into him being able to receive that. And he's a wonderful young man, and thank you for all that you've done for him in the last couple of years.
Such an extraordinary person. There's somebody who's right to complain about things examined, and he just, he doesn't, he's just such a he's such a good soul, and I know he'll be a huge success, so.
Well, thank you so much for all your efforts and what you've done for him.
So for the Excellence in Certified Service, I would like to invite, I believe Mr. Planters is gonna come up and speak, and along with Mrs. Amy Helms.
Good evening, everybody. It is really my privilege to get to speak about Mrs. Helms this evening. She is not only a fantastic teacher for our students and for her colleagues, but I am incredibly grateful for Amy as our second grade lead teacher. She does a great job coordinating her grade level and leading her team, which saves me a lot of work. So I really appreciate all that Amy does, and she got a number of nominations and a lot of great comments from colleagues about how loved she is and what a wonderful job she does. So too much to read all of those, but I did take the time to compile a lot of those comments, and I'd like to share with you a lot of what her colleagues tend to say about her. So Amy Helms is one of the hardest-working teachers I've ever met. She embraces new ideas and isn't afraid to try them out in her classroom. She's the first person to arrive at school and the last one to leave. She's dedicated to detail and works hard to ensure that she's giving her students an engaging learning experience. She's patient and kind with her students and with her coworkers. If you have a question about anything, Amy's there to help. Amy's incredibly dedicated. When she started at Westlake Elementary School, she joined the Sunshine Committee and put a lot of time into helping plan showers, buying gifts, and bringing joy to fellow staff members. Then she joined the PBIS Committee and worked on our Positive Behavior Support Plan. Last year, she was part of our math committee, helped choose our new math curriculum, and has been essential in helping the rollout of our new math program by taking the time to organize materials for each second-grade teacher. This year, Amy became the second-grade team leader, and she has done a wonderful job. She's detailed and organized. She took it upon herself to make sure that new members joining the second-grade team this year were prepared with activities for the start of the year. She always maintains a positive attitude, and she is a go-to person when anyone has a question about curriculum. Amy always goes out of her way to make sure everyone on the second-grade team feels included, including support staff. She has the best way of keeping everyone on track and making sure everyone feels her. Amy's a dedicated and conscientious teacher. She works incredibly hard to ensure students and families she serves are getting what they need to be successful. Her number-one priority is her students, and she works tirelessly to meet all of their needs. Amy cares about the whole child, including everything that goes along with their academic needs. She worries about them as if they were her own children. She comes to activities that are outside of the school hours for her students, like the school music concerts and participating in trunk-or-treat. She's organized and works hard to provide wonderful learning experiences for her students each day. Amy is a very humble person. She never seeks praise for the extra work she puts in. She makes all of the extra tasks look so effortless that I don't think we always appreciate how much extra time she really is spending on our team. And finally, Amy's positivity and professionalism is to be admired by all. She's an incredible second-grade teacher, same as the talented and committed title and reading teacher she was at Dover many years ago. Her students have always grown so much in her care. Her genuine concern for every person and every detail shows Amy's selfless nature. Westlake Elementary School is lucky to have her.
I was not ready to make a speech, but thank you so much. I'm so fortunate to work in this wonderful district with amazing students, amazing staff, colleagues, administration. I just want to thank everyone, my family, everybody, so thank you. I was a wonderful surprise to be honored with this, and I appreciate it. I'm good at talking in front of children, but kind of another thing. And ironically, I was sitting here, Mr. Lamb was, he was in my high school graduating class, and as I heard that there was a speech, I was like, oh, he probably remembers I was voted most shy and now here I am, yeah, making a speech. So thank you, everyone. I really appreciate the great honor and recognition. So, and thank you to all my colleagues and teammates and everything for the nomination. So thank you, everybody.
Well, this picture should be taken. Just to add, thank you very much for everything you do. I know my son had you, and it's amazing, and I just want to say thank you, and it's well-deserved.
Okay.
All right, so that brings our celebrations to an end. So at this, we are gonna switch into business now, and we're going to have our school district library tax budget presentation. You're more than welcome to stay for it, but if you would like to take this time to head out, feel free to do that as well.
So, Dr. Goggins, I think now that all these seats are open in the front of the room, I think the students should move up, including my daughter.
They're like, no.
They have to do this for an assignment, their last assignment, and wait until the very last.
Yeah. I think her comment was, at least it's not planning commission.
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move the school district library tax budget up.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, okay.
To amend the agenda to move the tax budget, library tax budget up to the section after the Excellence Awards. Here now.
Yes.
Laczynski.
Yes.
Lamb. Yes.
Okay.
Well, thank you for having me here this evening, and this may surprise you, but I was also the shyest in my high school. I can't say that with straight face. Not true. I would also like to acknowledge one of my trustees, Bob Plants is here as well. Bob has served, is on his third term as a library trustee, and has been an integral part of what we do there. So I'm thankful for him to be here this evening to help represent the library. For those of you in the audience, and perhaps online, I always like to let folks know why the library is presenting to the school board, you know, the two different entities. We are what's called in Ohio, a school district library, which means that there are a couple of things that the school district and the library are in ways that were related. And one of those is that the school district is responsible for putting us on the ballot when we go on the ballot. They are our taxing authority. We do not have the authority to go on the ballot on our own. Even though we have an independent board, it is the school board that has to, and the way the law reads, must put us on the ballot. And also, the school board is responsible for appointing our trustees. So we work hand-in-hand with the school board to select folks and get them appointed to our school board, seven people. So there are some things that the school district does need some oversight, and one of those is the tax budget. And this is a budget that we are, I believe, like the school district, we are required to file with the county Budget Commission to give them a sense of what our budget will look like in two thousand and twenty-five. The budget that we have presented to the school board is not likely, in real dollars, exactly what our budget will look like, but in broad strokes, it, for the most part, is, it's a guideline. We will spend the summer and early fall refining that budget to the point where we will put in place a temporary budget by the end of the year so that we can spend on it from January first, and then sometime usually by February, we actually, when we have a better sense of what the revenues will actually look like, we will pass our permanent budget. Speaking of our permanent, our revenues, our property taxes, where we do local property tax, is where we get most of our revenue. The second-largest portion of that is the PLF, or Public Library Fund, which has gotten very interesting. Our levy that we passed in two thousand and three was a small increase, one of the first that we'd had in over fifteen years, which added an extra point-six mils, and that is generating a little bit more revenue. But the Public Library Fund, which had been down for the past decade since, you know, two thousand and nineteen, was starting to come back a little, and last year, we had a really nice year of state money coming in. We were really over budget. This year so far, we are tracking at fifty thousand dollars less than was anticipated. So it's not a great year. Our budget will still be fine, but with that state money kind of going up and down, our budget is always a little bit iffy. That's why we wait to pass our permit budget until after the first of the year. But what's really important is, what do we, what do we do with that budget overall? And as you all well know, for years and years and years, the library is typically a nationally-ranked library based on a lot of criteria, such as library usage, people coming to the door, circulation, programs, and things like that. In two thousand and twenty-three, we circulated about eight hundred and fifty thousand items. We had two hundred and sixty-seven thousand visits. Over a quarter million people visited their public library over the course of a year. And that has been traditionally, as you can imagine, we took a little bit of a hit in that little time called the pandemic. But we, each year since then, we keep building back. People are coming back to the library more. What's interesting is that people are starting to use the library a little differently, and this is not unanticipated. We've been talking about this in library land for quite some time, where there will probably be a tipping point at which, you know, are people coming for the library for books and materials, or are they coming to the library as a place to gather, collaborate, study, and so forth? We have firmly planted our flag in the sand that people will be coming to the library for books and materials for quite some time. Not every library sees it that way, and I'm not saying they're right or wrong, but you see some libraries, their collections are starting to get smaller. Whereas we currently still have around two hundred thousand items in physical print. In addition to that, we have tens of thousands of items in electronic form, and our circulation tends to still be very strong. But we are seeing an increase in visits that aren't necessarily correlating proportionally to more checkout, which tells us that people are in fact using the library for the study rooms, the meeting rooms, places to congregate, work with each other. Our makerspace has been a big driver of people coming in to not just access content, but create content, which is a trend that has been going on in libraries for a while, but our makerspace has really upped our game in that arena. So when you talk about materials, it's, a lot of people are not aware of this. Publishers have always, always had to provide us with print materials, and because it was, we bought a lot of those, we usually get a pretty, pretty good discount on books, and we buy a lot of them. But when all of a sudden e-publishing took off, everybody just kind of thinks, well, they're electronic. They should be less expensive, and you should be saving a ton of money by buying things electronically. But the publishers never really wanted to sell materials to the library in the first place. They want to sell directly to the customer, and so they had an opportunity to really put the squeeze on libraries when it comes to electronic materials. So we pay a lot more for electronic materials, and we don't have the access that you might think we have. For example, you check out, what they do is they do a book model. If you have one copy of a book, one person can use that book. That makes sense, right? So the publishers have said, well, then that has to extend to the electronic version. Even though technology would allow all of you to use it at the same time, if we wanted that to happen, we would have to buy five copies for all of you to have it at the same time. And the price of that is actually more than it would cost to buy the physical book. And they do things like that because they would prefer not to sell to us at all, but they do sell to us, and we do provide that. We provide a lot of online and digital materials, but it is a little costly. So we're still trying to work through that. We still circulate more print items than electronic items, and that will be the trend for a while yet. But seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars of our budget goes to just buying materials. That is what we are still about and will be about for quite some time, is books are our materials, our brand. We, along those lines, we have our summer reading challenge is coming up, so if you haven't gone over to the library to sign up for summer reading challenge, that's a big part of it. We always see our busy time is the summer months where people are reading a lot, checking out materials. But we also have an amazing array of programs on just about every topic imaginable. A lot of those are courtesy of our Friends and Foundation Group that does support our programming efforts. We do a lot of partnership programs, so it's not just your public library. We do partner programs with the school. I'd be remiss not to mention one of the greatest I'd be remiss not to mention one of the greatest partnerships that has developed in the last couple of years is the Westlake Bay Village Rotary Art Festival that will be held on the grounds of the library and the Westlake Elementary School. This will be our fourth annual. We, the last three years, we've estimated about 2,000 people have come through that festival in one day between 10 a.m. and 5 p.m. We will have over 70 art vendors this year, possibly even maybe 80. We have a music stage. We have a beer and wine garden. It is turning into a signature and premier event in the city, but it's all about those partnerships. Other groups worth noting that we partner with Connecting for Kids continues to grow and be a strong presence and is a good, strong partner of the school district. That is a group that helps families who have a concern about their child's development. It's an amazing organization that started at Porter Public Library and has now extended all across Northeast Ohio. Another group that we are strategically partnered with is the Carolyn L. Farrell Foundation that helps on the other end of the spectrum, and that is helping families and individuals struggling with dementia and Alzheimer's related, brain health related issues. Those programs typically take place at the Center Park for Living on Detroit Road, but the library is very involved in helping to create that kind of programming and making it available. And many, many other programs. I also mentioned the Maker Space, which represents really a new phase in libraries, and that is not just providing access to content, but providing the opportunity to create content. There really is something for everybody going on at your public library. We couldn't do it without the budget that we have, and we're thankful for the taxpaying citizens of Westlake to support our levy at over 75% of our revenue, but the state funding as well, which a lot of people are not aware of. Ohio is extremely unique in this manner that if you live in Ohio, you can get a library card at any library in Ohio. Where I come from in Missouri, Kansas, that's not always the case. If you don't live in that community, you'd have to write a fairly big check to be able to belong to that library if you didn't live in that community. In Ohio, because of the state funding model, you can use any library in Ohio at no extra charge. So not everybody knows that. So that's what, that's what our budget kind of looks like. It's a little over $6 million, $6 million budget, which is up a little over a million from when we passed our tax levy in 2023. And we feel like we're meeting the needs of the public, but we're always willing to get feedback and see what else we can do better. So I would take any questions that you have about your public library at this time.
I have one question about your, the ebooks, because I, I read them on my trusty iPad. I love it. But after 21 days, it disappears and you don't even have the opportunity to renew like you do the physical book if, if no one else has it on hold. Why is that with electronics?
Some, some items are renewable and, and some aren't. It kind of depends, you know, we, that's the other thing that's frustrating is we're in a lot of different platforms, and every publisher gets to choose what is allowable and not allowable to a certain degree. So the rules aren't the same for every book. If you're in Hoopla, it's going to be different than if in your, if you're in Overdrive. When, or Libby, and if you're in Libby, we're part of the Ohio Library Consortium, Digital Consortium, so that is, adds another layer of complexity. So it is fraught with all kinds of issues, some that we have control over and some that we don't. It's very frustrating. And then that doesn't even mention the authors who sign exclusive deals with Audible, which means that we can't even get their content. So I like author Robert Craig. I can't get his books through Libby or Hoopla because he has an exclusive deal with Audible. You can't even get that content. Very frustrating.
Last time you were here, you were talking about you're going to be doing a renovation on the teen area. Is that move forward?
Yes, thank you for reminding me about that big project. Yes, we are, this summer, well, after summer's over, because summer is our big busy time, starting April 5th, we'll have a few renovations. And what is going to be, right now, the teen area is a little alcove that's kind of in the middle of the library, and kids come over after school and, and they're full of energy and enthusiasm, and it's on display for the whole library. So what we're going to do is take where the AV collection is right now, youth AV, flip it to that little alcove. We're not losing any materials. It'll be the same number of materials. And then we're going to kind of wall off that area a little bit. You'll still be able to see in there, but the teens will have a little bit of their own space that will, I think, make them feel more comfortable about not being out, and it'll, the rest of patrons will enjoy it. That's going to be a really nifty project, I think, that will benefit, as the Rotarians would say, it will be beneficial to all concerns. The, the other thing is we're going to open the second floor to the public, and a lot of people don't know that we have a second floor. There's not a lot up there. It's where the admin offices are, but there's a lovely mezzanine and a couple of rooms up there where the board meets and staff does some training. That will mean that we'll have more meeting rooms for people to use, but also a lovely space for people to sit and kind of have a lovely view to read, study, collaborate and so forth. The third thing is circulation is getting a little bit of a redesign to be more efficient. Right now, it's, it's not a very efficient space, so we'll do that. And we'll be reintroducing a coffee, kiosk and snack area for people so that it's not going to be a cafe again, but it'll be an opportunity for people to have some coffee and snacks in the library. So that'll all be kicking off August 5th, and we anticipate it'll take a couple of months.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a comment, since I have you here and have the opportunity, just a wonderful relationship, partnership that we have with Porter Public Library, and I think it's just a tremendous resource, not only for the schools, but the entire community. And, you know, Mr. Plant's here as well, and you guys do a great job.
Well, I mentioned it big time last year because it was still fairly new, but probably should mention it again, that the path that we had the foresight to put, connect to Westlake Elementary School has paid dividends like we wouldn't have even imagined. We, over there the other day, and our librarians were giving a tour to like 30 kids. Every patron's comment on it, staff comments on it, when they see the kids coming through touring the library, it's like a great joy to see them in the library, excited about the library. So that partnership has been fantastic.
This, my, somebody yesterday that I was talking to had a whole bag of eyeglasses. Do the Lions still collect? And you have a place in the library that they can drop that on?
We do.
Okay.
We do. And Kevin, another new service, Rust Belt Riders was looking for a place to have a centralized drop off point. So if you want to, if you're not into composting on your own, but you don't want to throw all your food scraps in the trash, you can work with Rust Belt Riders to get a code, and then you can drop stuff off at the library in our parking lot. We've got some bins for that.
I saw that today when I was dropping off a book.
I'm sorry?
I saw that today when I was dropping.
Yeah, it's pretty new.
It's brand new.
It's brand new.
Okay. It's wonderful, the partnership that has been going on between the library and the schools in the city, and it's a wonderful asset within the city.
It's just really nice to see the ability to leverage, everybody to leverage what they're doing. Like the Farrell Foundation is doing stuff that if it was just up to them, how, you know, how many people are going to find it? But if the library is helping promote, but at the same time, people go there and they realize that the library has resources. So those things just always pay dividends. Same with the school, same with all of the organizations. When we work together, we're, we're better.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the library tax budget, or you have questions for Mr. Mangles? No? Okay, then I am going to move that we approve the Westlake Porter Public Library 2025 tax budget.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Okay, we'll call this. Yes?
Shut up?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you all very much, and I would love to stay for the meeting, but I have a meeting with one of our partners, the Farrell Foundation. Thank you all very much.
And Mr. Plans can leave too, if you want to, or you're welcome to stay. Okay. Okay, with that, we are going to go back to superintendents.
Mine will be brief. We celebrated a lot of retirees, our excellence awards, and we're able to hear from the library in a moment. We'll hear five-year forecast from Mr. Hopkins. So really what I want to say, this is, we are hitting the culmination of our school year, and that's Saturday. Saturday, 3 o'clock, Cleveland State University, Willstein Center, the commencement ceremony for our class of 2024. Those of you who are in the audience, if you are not, any of you seniors? No, I didn't think so. But for our senior class, your day will be coming. And but this is the moment. We have people, students who've been with us since preschool, kindergarten, first grade, and some that would come in middle school, but either way, it is their time. It's going to be their time on Saturday to be able to celebrate this rite of passage in their lives. And we're really excited about celebrating with them. So that's the big news that we have, and it is an agenda item to approve the class of 2024. So I will pause at that point and gladly turn it over to.
Mr. Hopkins?
Unfortunately, I will not brief to your forecast tonight, so I do want to bring that up and, and share with you our forecast. First off, I know it's on the screen. It's very, very small. All of the information is available on Word docs. If you log into WLA.org, go to Board of Education, you can click on Board Docs and go to tonight's meeting and bring up all the information under the Treasures Recognition for Five-Year Forecast. As a quick reminder, we are required under state law to present and approve the five-year forecast twice per year. First, we're required to do it in November of each fiscal year, and then we are required to do an update in May. So this is our update to our five-year forecast. Kind of go through each of the areas of how we break this all down. And so obviously, just as Mr. Mangles spoke about with library, you know, revenue is very, very important, and we are even more heavily financed locally than the library is. Really out of our, we're running about a $60 million budget, and you'll see this year, almost $46 million is directly provided by local taxes. You'll see some information up there on how we have our collection rates and how they're collected. But what I do want to point out is, as our tax revenues have grown, we have not formally passed a new operating levy in 18 years and two and a half weeks. May 2nd of 2006 is the last time the district passed a new operating levy. And that was for 6.9 mils. That's pretty amazing, and I really want you to think about that because there are some districts throughout the state that have gone that long, but there are districts that are heavily, heavily financed by the state of Ohio. An example that I use is East Cleveland, the last time they passed a levy was like in the 90s. That's a different situation than Westlake City Schools. And so to, for our district to be able to provide the services to our students, the opportunities to our students, and not have new operating money in 18 plus years is truly astonishing. And I do give a lot of credit to first and foremost, our Board of Education and the administration of our district, as well as our city leaders. The city has done a wonderful job doing sustained growth over a long period of time, and that has allowed our tax revenues to increase pretty much annually. So it's been a benefit to the district. When we look at the update that I've done from November, we updated this year fiscal year to actual money, money received. We were up about $700,000 than I had anticipated. I don't anticipate any more money coming in through tax revenue as we've received our settlement for this fiscal year already. Moving forward, I do not count on new revenue coming in until we actually receive it. New construction does add to our taxes. So as property values increase, House Bill 920 says that this will, the millage rates drop, so we collect about the same amount of money. But new construction is not subject to that. So we are seeing some new construction throughout the community, both commercially and in some residential property, but I don't actually include in the forecast until we start collecting. So there could be some growth going in the future that I'm not reflecting right now. Additionally, Cuyahoga County is undergoing the sextennial reappraisal, and that's done this calendar year. By law, every six years, the county is required to physically put their eyes on each and every property throughout a community and reappraise it. They reappraise it based on a number of factors, including other transactions, sales transactions throughout the community, as well as physical presentation and maybe additions that might have happened, things of that nature. So that's happening right now. That will impact our tax revenues going forward. To what extent? I don't know. There are some big numbers that are being thrown around right now as they talk about increases in Cuyahoga County. Again, while our millage, as property values go up, our millage does not go up, it actually goes down, but that doesn't happen on our inside. So we'll see some inflationary growth if the property values increase. And right now, the rumors are 20 to 30% increase in property values is what I've heard so far. We'll, we'll have to wait to see what actually happens as the county does. Moving on from our local taxes, we have state revenues as well. We have two pieces of state revenue. This one is our state grants. We have unrestricted grants and restricted grants. You'll see out of a $60 million budget, it's not a huge amount of money. You're looking at about $3.7 million, but we're appreciative of that. That has increased this year. We appreciate the advocacy of the Alliance for High Quality Education. And that has raised the minimum from 5% to 10%. So we did see an increase this year from last year. Last year, we were around that $2.8 million, $2.9 million. So we've seen, we're up to, planning for about $3.7 million this year. And I'm carrying that going forward. The state budget is a biennial budget. It changes every two years. This is year one of the two years. So I'm not exactly certain what 26 through 28 will look like, but I am holding it at least what we're reflecting right now. The other portion of state revenue is called the state share of local property taxes. As residential property owners, you get a reduction on your property taxes called the homestead rollback. Also, for some of our senior citizens who own property, they get what's called a homestead exemption. And that is in lieu of you paying those taxes that are assessed on your property, the state of Ohio pays on your behalf. So we're about $4.4, $4.5 million we receive annually, and I'm just holding that for, going forward. And then we have all other revenue. This is kind of a catchall. Last year, we were about $4.3 million. I have it at $3.5 million this year, and then 2.5 going forward. We've talked extensively about pilot agreements and how those have dropped out, but really what we're seeing drive up that other operating revenue right now is interesting. Interest rates have been historically high right now, or at least historically over the past 20 years, high right now. And we're able to see a benefit to the district as we're carrying a, we're planning to carry about a $30 million ending cash balance. So investing those funds, we're, we're able to have a nice interest measure. Expenditures is the opposite side of our scale that we measure our district with. The update here for our salary and benefits is the Board of Education did approve a new three-year agreement with WTA earlier this year. We are asking the Board of Education to approve a new three-year agreement with our OPEC, our classified staff tonight. And so assuming the board does pass that, I have built in all of those increases. I tried to go through their salary growth for this year at 4%, next year at 5%, or approximately 5%, then 4.5% in fiscal year 26, 4.75% in fiscal year 27, then I dropped it back down to 3% in fiscal year 28. The reason for that is in fiscal year 28, that's the unknown. That's where the contract is no longer in place, and we would be back at the negotiations table. I am carrying 10% increases on insurance. Medical insurance is one of our largest costs. In fact, it's our single largest cost. The district on an annual basis is both the employee share and employer's share is running about $8.5 million right now for health insurance. That's our health insurance, prescription dental and vision plans. So that's a pretty sizable increase. I typically carry a 10% increase each year as a way to protect the district, not knowing exactly what the amount would be. Last year, we were hit with 13% increase. It was the largest that I've had in my career. I'm not sure how to, if I need to adjust the 10% going forward. So right now, I'm holding at that 10%. We will find out our rates for next year in August, and that will weigh more heavily on my forecast going into our November forecast for next. Then we really have our other expenditures. So when we look at our salary and benefits, we were, I'm going to just jump back real quick. When we looked at our salary. Other expenditures. So when we look at our our salary and benefits, uh, we were, I'm gonna just jump back real quick. When we looked at our salary, we're this year at, I'm sorry. Forty, uh, I'm sorry, thirty five million dollars uh in salary or give or take another fourteen million uh plus in benefits. So we're sitting right around fifty million dollars out of our total sixty million dollar uh um overall uh budget. The reality of it is our discretionary funds are not a large part of our budget. And so you'll see uh what these three line items really become discretionary, although to be very honest, most of them are not discretionary in any way. But uh, we do look at these pieces and and you'll see purchase services and put our substitute teachers. Uh, some of our services where we need to uh send students to uh other educational placements. Uh, this could be our vehicle repairs or utilities. Uh, we know we've all seen increases in our utilities at our home. We've all seen massive increases in our own insurances. Not just medical type insurance, but also property insurance, auto insurance. Homeowners, we're seeing the same thing uh increases for the district. So. Uh, we are right now planning about uh six point one, six point two million dollars this year. Uh, I'm showing it increasing by about fifty thousand dollars a year uh each year. I'm not sure that's realistic. Uh, I do appreciate the work of our administrators to keep those costs down, but uh we are seeing them creep up uh pretty uh sizably. Um, uh, the one thing I will say is we made a business move this year. Uh, working with uh. Mrs. Perry, our uh. People's Services Director, uh, we have uh some grants that we uh. From the uh federal government, I D A uh Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, uh Part B, where. We started taking some of our educational placement out placements and charging it to general fund and then charging staff to the grant. So you'll see an increase, uh, and it's not all of the increase. I'm not blaming uh uh I D A at all, but. Uh, we did make a business move, so we did see a s- a a direct correlation for an increase in purchase services because of a business choice that we. Uh, uh, move, again, not an extra expense to the district, just instead of charging salary uh to the grant, we're charging. Uh, we're now charging salary with grant instead of these purchase services. Uh, then we have supplies and materials. These are many classroom supplies, everything from toilet paper, paper towels, um instructional supplies. Uh, fuel, things like that. Um. We're right now, uh, the biggest cost going from twenty two to twenty three and ongoing is we have re-implemented our textbook adoptions. Uh, so I appreciate the work of Mrs. Musselman and Mr. Wilson, uh, and their offices working uh with our staff to uh. And then the board, uh, last meeting approved some of our adoptions uh upcoming. But uh, that is a cost and 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 that's a significant cost, and we have deferred it for many years. Um, but we do need to get back into that cycle, so I have that built in. And then finally, we have capital outlay. Uh, we are fortunate that back in two thousand and sixteen, uh, the community didn't give us a P I levy. That we're able to do a number of our uh. Projects with, but we still have some P I and we can't afford everything. Uh, that P I levy, if you remember, was not uh built based on need. It was built on the idea of combined with the bond issue, uh, it was uh replacing some millage that was falling off the tax. So it was no, no new taxes uh by just replacing it in that fashion. So it was designed. At a dollar figure, uh, so that we would not have an increase to our. Community. But uh, we have needs that exceed what our P I is. And so this really is um built in here is capital outlay. For um. Mostly, we're using it right now with our educational technology as we've made the choice. I was directed by the Board of Education a number of years ago. I think in October of twenty twenty or twenty twenty one, to use general fund for our educational technology uh instead of P I. And so that's where we're building it in right now. Uh, again, does not cover all of the uh pieces, and and I appreciate Dr. Zagre and his staff. Um, and. Their work, including uh applying for some grants through E rate to cover some of our infrastructure, but uh this would be your education. Uh, more of it's gonna come on now, uh, last year, this year and going forward. Um, as uh S R funds, we we bought all of our chrome books uh initially with S R funds. Now we're gonna have to use general fund. Um. What do, what does all of this mean? You know, uh. We're going to be spending more than we're taking. Um, now, this is not all doom and gloom. Please don't take that from this, and I know how that chart looks, but that's just the numbers. Um, a a couple of things. We have been successful in uh both negotiating changes to our contracts that are beneficial to the district. As well as uh the administrative staff here, watching over our finances uh under the leadership of Board of Education. That we've been able to push off some of these deficits. Uh, if you were to uh hold me to it right now and say we'd be deficit spending this year, I will tell you probably not. Even though my forecast has about three hundred thousand dollars on there, uh, I think we're gonna be right around uh break even, depending on what kind of bills come in. Um, between now and the uh end of June. And certainly, as we go out five years, uh, would I be able to say with any certainty that we would be eight point seven million dollars in the hole? None. Not at all. A lot of things changes over time, and like I said, I only count on revenue coming in when we uh start to receive it. So as we have some of those changes, uh, that will offset this. Uh, what I can say with certainty is, um, while I certainly will. Follow uh the leadership of the Board of Education, uh, I would struggle to explain being on the ballot this November. Uh, we could do it if the board wanted to. Um, you just need two pa- uh, two resolutions passed by the sometime the first week or so of uh July. Uh, but I uh planning right now with about a thirty two million dollar uh cash bu- uh budget. I'm sorry, cash balance. Um, I think it would be uh unwise to be on the ballot this November. Um, and I think that ideally, we try to push it off uh as long as we can, but also being uh reasonable because we are going to need those funds. And we need to be able to tell our uh story to the community. So when we're going out to our community saying, hey, it's been eighteen years, nineteen years, twenty years. Since uh new money's been passed, um, we need you to support the district. We've been able to do wonderful, wonderful things. Including the culmination that we will see Saturday with the graduation uh this year's class. But we've done wonderful things, but we just need the continued support as uh we're facing the same inflationary increases that everybody else is. So uh, it's a cautionary tale right now, but we're in a good place as it stands today. We'll continue to monitor it and try to find that sweet spot in order to go back to the community uh. And and be able to pass new money for the first time in a very long time. If you have any questions on the forecast, I'm happy to answer them.
That was my question about when would you anticipate us needing to look seriously at putting a. Uh, oh, yeah, yeah, and um because there's always a delay in when you get the funds. So I don't want to leave us in a, in a lurch where we. Really hurting for funds.
I a hundred percent agree with you. Um, but I I I believe that I I said uh last year or the year before, when I had this uh question in front of me is, um. You know, I would hate until we're deficit spent. And uh, last year, we deficit spent by eleven thousand dollars, I think it was. It was break even essentially. This year, we're gonna be somewhere around break even again. Uh, so I think as we go into next school year, we uh get to see the effects of uh the revaluation. We get to see the effects of some of the contractual language uh that we've negotiated. Um, and we uh will monitor it to see where we would end up uh deficit spending. You're uh, we are very, very fortunate. Uh, sitting on a, on a sizable cash balance allows us that flexibility. Uh, and we certainly don't want to get to the point where we're on razor thin margins that um it would, a a failure would uh. Uh, drive immediate cuts. So it is trying to find that sweet spot, but I think we. We have a duty, uh, uh, fiduciary responsibility to uh most likely be deficit spending before we ask for more.
Questions?
I'm trying to remember who I had heard this line from, but you know, the. The one comment that I've always heard is, it's not a matter of. If you're gonna be going back to the ballot as a school board, it's rather a matter of when.
Hundred percent.
And I think that's always important to remind people that it's not. Truly, it's not a matter of like, well, we're not going back to the ballot. It it's just, we're not going back to, we're, we're not having discussions right now of going back to the ballot immediately. It might be next year, it might be the following year. Um, and just constantly reminding people that. Two thousand and six was the last time we got actual new money, as you've already stated, and reminding people of House Bill nine twenty and while. The property tax revaluation is going to be taking place and people's taxes are going to be going up, we are not going to really see a major impact of that, so.
We, we may not, and and it is interesting, um. I would be very curious to see how the revaluation uh impacts uh. Our millage. Um, uh, again, it's not an exciting thing to talk about, but I I am very curious is. There are uh pieces uh like uh that are built into House Bill nine twenty that's called the twenty mil floor. And we are already uh uh coming close to it. We're about twenty five mils, give or take, right now. Um. So I am curious on how that will.
I think it'll be important to continue to communicate that and, you know, truly, it's a, it's if taxes, property taxes go up twenty percent, we are not going to see a twenty percent increase. And then, you know.
Spot on, correct.
Whatever we do see, we can communicate.
Absolutely. So concludes my report.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So at this. Point, we have a hearing of the public. And if there's anybody that wishes to come forward and. Speak. No. Okay, um. We have uh the minutes from our regular meeting of April twenty ninth that uh we've had a chance to uh go over. And if there are any additions or corrections. Uh, if not, then those who uh. Uh, approve of the minutes, please say aye.
I'll aye.
Any, you know, one. Disapproving? Okay. Minutes have been approved. Okay, with that, we are going into um your resolutions. Then do you want to keep um? Which ones do you want to keep separate, eh?
Yes, I'll briefly go through them uh real quick. Uh, I would like to keep uh A separate.
Okay.
Uh, but then I believe we can combine uh we. Through.
That's okay.
Um. We've talked uh at length about the forecast, that's A. Uh, B, I do have uh permanent appropriations. Uh, this time of year, we start making those changes to our appropriations. Again, uh, a lot of this is moving money around uh right now as we finalize uh budgets. Uh, for the year, uh, our staff has been very good and most all of our P O's have finalized, but. Uh, this is just some moves going back to April. I have some done and now uh uh certificates there if you have questions. Um, I have uh a couple of contracts I'm asking the board to approve. Uh, first one's Jeweling and Groom. They do our audit services on an annual basis. They've been very good to work with. Uh, very flexible with us, and I'm asking to sign another three year agreement with them. Uh, also, we use HPC Healthcare Process Consulting. They do our, uh, run our Medicaid School Program. Um, we have uh. Students with uh disabilities uh who qualify under Medicaid Services uh for, I think it's OTPT. Is there anything else, Mrs. Perry? Is it just OTPT for Medicaid? And speech, okay, I'm sorry, and speech as well. Um, and we're able to uh build back to that. Uh, we receive about ninety thousand dollars a year in Medicaid funding for that. Uh, but we are required to uh have someone um oversee it and run it. That's HPC, so I'm asking for a three year agreement with them. And then I have the administrative handbook and the exempt handbook that I'm asking for updates to. These are specifically related to uh some of the changes that the board has asked me to implement on the administrative side for our two sixty employees with uh vacation. Uh, days, I'm sorry, uh, holidays um that we've uh discussed uh about other contracts. And then also the severance that was put in place uh for uh pretty much now the entire, everyone else in the district. Uh, same thing with the exempt, the holidays were already in the exempt contract. So the only change there is the severance package that, assuming the board approves the M O U tonight, it would be in place for uh both burning units as well.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve Treasurers' Recommendation Six A, which is the five year forecast?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other uh questions or further discussion?
I would just say that I had the opportunity to sit in on the Finance Committee uh meeting, and Mr. Hopkins did a wonderful job of uh explaining what was going on. As he just did um the last few minutes, so we're very fortunate here in Westlake, so.
Yes, we do appreciate your uh. Educations. And the way that you explain things to us is very much appreciated. Anyone else? Okay, roll call.
Lamb, yes. You're not?
Yes.
Lizinsky.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there a motion to approve Treasurers' Recommendations Six B through Six F?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions?
Um, just a reminder, the additional holidays, just so we're. Being transparent, it's the day after Thanksgiving, if I remember correctly, it was um.
Christmas Eve and New Year's.
It Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. So we're not talking like in the middle of the school year. I mean, these are days that most people are off anyways, so.
They are, and um. Again, this is something we've talked about and and discussed, but um, right now, it's uh, I, it's. Yeah, it's moving up to thirteen holidays, which are, again, the standard holidays throughout.
And were you able to move uh yours and Dr. Godin's? There was some discussion. When we did the uh. Approval of the new contracts that you wouldn't be able to to do that until the following.
You did change Medicaid.
Okay. Who else? Okay, roll call, please.
You're not?
Yes.
Lamb, yes. Lizinsky.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Godin.
So, uh, start off with uh seven A. Gibson donations. Uh, let's see here, my computer will open it. We have an anonymous donor who donated eleven thousand dollars to purchase. A book every month for all students enrolled in second and third grade at Westlake Elementary School. This donation was inspired by Rachel Myros, a teacher at Westlake Elementary, who started the Book a Month Drive. Earth to You donated two yards of soil and a five gallon bucket of rainbow rock to the garden club at Westlake Elementary School. Bruce Spocet donated seven hundred and fifty dollars to the Megan Spocet Memorial Scholarship Fund at Westlake High School. Matthews Frosty. Donated a thousand dollars to the Great Expectations Scholarship Fund at Westlake High School. Um, so we'd like to thank everybody for their generosity. Um, I do want to touch on seven B, which, as I mentioned earlier, is a list of our um graduating seniors. And as it states in there, as long as they. They are on track and as long as they continue to complete everything that they're supposed to complete, this will be an accurate reflection. Um, letters C and D, as Mr. Hopkins mentioned, a resolution to approve the O P C contract. Um, and D is to approve an M O U, a memorandum of understanding with O P C. Similar to what we did with uh the teachers to extend um. The adjustment in the severance package to the current retirees. That uh. Would be eligible next year. So um the one, the teacher, so the. The classified members who are retiring right now, you know, you don't want them to regret and say, oh, if I would have stayed one more year when the contract goes in effect. I would get that uh incentive as well. So really what we're doing. Is in seven C, we're approving the contract with O P C, and then in seven D, we're approving uh the M O U. Um, in regard to the severance uh sick day package of that. Um. O P C did ratify this contract on Monday. Uh, wait, what is today? No, last week, actually. It was last Monday. And uh, so. If you approve it, then the contract is in place. Um, other items that I'll point out is seven E, which is recommendate, recommendation to hire two. Um, intervention specialist Meredith Helt coming in as a preschool intervention specialist. Now, she was trying to be here today. She graduated from Miami on Saturday.
Yesterday.
Yesterday? Oh, it was on Sunday? Okay. And she was trying to get back for this meeting, but uh could not get here, texted Mr. Maber right before the meeting that uh. She's caught traffic, it isn't gonna make it. Um, we also, we do have here Max Lackner. Uh, who is a West two thousand and sixteen, Westlake graduate. Who is uh returning home to work in our elementary school as an intervention specialist. We're excited to see Mac, Max. Um, and then the rest of the items, the directors reviewed uh with all of you in the um. Their director's reports. So what I would like with my recommendations. To keep our donations, seven A separate. Um, I think they would, for seven B, the graduating class, you can combine C and D, since they're both the O P C. And then if we can do the resolution for uh Max and Meredith, uh, seven E separate.
Yes.
And then seven F through seven D D would be appropriate to.
Okay. That's exactly what I had.
That's what you had?
Yes, um, did we want Max to go up and interview?
I would love that. Do you know, Max, this is great, so come on up, Max.
Tell us about yourself, a little bit of what you've been doing.
Whatever speech you've uh prepared. Whatever speech you've uh prepared for this evening.
Did not prepare.
I know, I know.
Uh, but my name is Max Lackner. Um, I've been an intervention specialist for three years now. I'm really looking forward to coming to Westlake, coming back home, getting in the district that made me into the person that I am today. So I'm looking forward to impacting labs.
Have you seen the new uh baseball field?
I have. It's phenomenal. It is beautiful. Had the opportunity to play and coach on that field.
Okay. You also played on the old field, too.
Yeah, yeah. A little bit of an upgrade.
Well, welcome back to Westlake.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Yes, we're very happy to have you.
Thanks. Very excited to be here.
Thanks for being here tonight. It's a little bit boring, I know, our, our business meeting, but necessary. Okay.
All right.
Okay, so.
Um, so then, so that's Max. So yeah, so seven A for the Gibson donations, and then the B, the graduating class, C, D, the contracts, and then E.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Is there a motion to approve Superintendent's Recommendation seven A, which is the uh accepting gifts and donations?
So moved.
Second.
And just a big thank you to everybody who so generously donates. I think that Great Expectations Scholarship, that, that was new this year, maybe.
I'm not as familiar with.
And that's, that's one that's the kids don't apply for. They, it's just uh, I don't remember how uh Mr. Woods explained uh that they picked uh the kid um or the recipient. Um, and, and this Saturday is my very favorite day and Scholarship Night is my second favorite because it's just, I think Mr. Woods said that of the local organizations that donated, it was over ninety-seven thousand dollars given. And the ones that received, we had like seven military. Uh, three or four were actual ROTC, so it's a four-year tuition, and then three others were just, were going into the military. But it was a great presentation because they actually had all of the, the branches, um, except for Air Force. I'm not sure Air Force was there. But they uh presented to, to the recipients. So that was really great to see. And so of the, the uh top twenty scholars that got scholarships from their universities and colleges, I thought he said it was like one point three million.
It was one point six.
One point six, one point six million for the top. So one point six million from the colleges and universities and ninety-seven thousand from our local uh contributors. Uh, that's pretty amazing. So it, it's a great law, but it was exciting. So, okay. So we did, uh, no, we didn't vote on it. Okay, roll call, please.
Lamb? Yes. Kieran?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. I'm going to, to uh move, save you guys from having to do this. I move to accept Superintendent's Recommendation seven B, which is to approve the Westlake High School graduating class of twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
So of the three hundred and four seniors that we will be graduating, assuming they all pass the finals that start tomorrow, it was seven. I brought the senior night. Uh, we had, okay, it's three hundred and four seniors. It was seven that have earned the Military Seal through either enrolling in um an ROTC program, enlisting. I know there's a few that were, uh, at least one that's going into the reserves. And actually, we do have Air Force, Navy, Army, Marines, no Coast Guard. But we, we've pretty much covered them all. And it was nice to see um that increase this year. And I will say this, like Mrs. Lizinsky was saying, the Scholarship Night was a long evening, but wonderful evening. I think my favorite scholarship was the, I believe it was the Q Lab Pi Scholarship.
Yeah, it was, yeah, three thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars.
Like, it was exactly high, and then they gave them a pie.
A real pie.
A real pie. And then because they were so impressed by the uh applications, they gave uh two piece of the pie awards that were at least four hundred dollars each, and they got a piece of pie also.
It, it was very creative.
That was very adorable.
Yeah, that was very nice.
And it's an engineering scholarship, so nice play on the phrase.
Yes. Have some very creative people.
Um, and congratulations to all of our graduates.
And I have a granddaughter graduating too, so.
Oh, so you have to stay.
My yet.
Oh.
Do what? No, no, because she's not an employee every year. No, she's not.
Meeting between now and Saturday?
No, 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 no.
We're good.
Okay, we're good.
Make sure. And it's only a relative.
Okay. Any other additional comments? If not, then let's have roll call. Hit this over.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
Lamb? Yes.
You're gonna have a graduate next year, so just watch yourself. Is there a motion to approve Superintendent's Recommendation seven C and seven D, which is the O P C contract and the M O U?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, uh, further questions or discussions?
Uh, thank you for our O P C team and our administrative team for working on this contract, and it's great to have these wonderful relations with our unions to be able to make this seamless basis.
Yes.
I concur.
Yes. Absolutely ditto. Okay, any further comments? If not, roll call, please.
Lamb? Yes. Kieran?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Superintendent's Recommendation seven E, which is to approve employment of um our new of Max? And um
Meredith.
Merit, Meredith? Okay.
So, so moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Welcome to Westlake. Welcome back to Westlake, really.
Yes. Okay, roll call, please.
Kieran?
Yes.
Lamb? Yes. Lizinsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Superintendent's Recommendations? Oh, jeez.
Seven F.
Seven F through seven B D. My screen failed on me.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any questions or discussion about any of those? Nope. Okay, roll call, please.
Kieran?
Yes.
Lamb? Yes. Lizinsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to our second hearing of the public. And if there is not a person coming forward, then we are at board comments. I would just like to uh tell you about our recipients for the scholarships. We gave out but we were fortunate this year, we had five thousand dollars. So we gave out uh five one thousand dollar scholarships, and it's really hard because these, these students um have accomplished so much. They're just um very bright, um, very hardworking. They're involved in a lot of things. Many of them hold jobs in addition to all of their school activities. But the five that we gave to um were Travis Ferguson, who it was real interesting, as you were there, uh, the baseball team was still out. As Mr. Woods so appropriately said, he said they're playing in our backyard. I thought that was cute. And uh they did eventually come in, all traipsing across in their baseball uniforms. And Travis Ferguson was one of the baseball players uh to receive uh one of our scholarships. Katie Kruger, um, Aspen Neff, Maria Rita, and uh Ethan Singh. So those were our five recipients. And it was a very joyful night. Any other board comments? Looking forward.
I got a list here.
Go for it. Did you, uh, did you get your cap and gown or you?
Yes, I think I'm all set with that. I'll pick it up, I think tomorrow, Wednesday.
Okay.
So um both Liz and I uh for teacher appreciation had the opportunity to stand out at Westlake High School on Tuesday and L B M S and D I S on Wednesday. Um.
I covered Wes on uh the elementary school on Friday.
And I'm sorry, I couldn't make that. Um, music out of mode was amazing as always. Um, it was great to see um all of the uh different performances um for all the uh grade levels. Um, I mentioned the Finance Committee. Um, the D I S art show happened last week, which was really neat to see all the, the projects and the artwork that the kids have been working on at uh uh D I S. So softball season's done, rugby, rugby season's done. That's about it.
Oh, I do want to say that uh I met uh two young men that go to our high school. Uh, one's a freshman, one's a junior. They both play baseball and they are both gonna be in the the orchestra pit for uh Saturday's commencement. But so I asked him, I said, well, how was the new field? Hmm, they love it. Love it. They just uh had wonderful things to say about it. So I guess it was a really good project that you guys pulled off.
I've heard similar in softball, too. Actually, I had it uh, what event, but that senior night, I had a couple of people mention her, the awards night.
My brother, uh, my, my niece actually plays the Rocky River, and I think they played eight games total this year. And uh
It didn't seem like that bad of a
Well, and I said, well, we got eighteen games in.
Did you, so with that, eighteen games?
That, it made that much of a difference?
I think there were twelve, well, the JV was twelve and six, so yeah, eighteen games, and uh Rocky River only played eight games. And uh I said, well, guys need to get a turf field in.
Oh, oh, great. Now they're gonna start getting phone calls, James.
Oh, we should also mention that we, we have a runner in, in the group here. Tell them what you did this past weekend.
Oh, I just participated in the Cleveland Marathon on the weekend and ran a little half marathon yesterday, so.
In a ten K the day before.
Wow.
Yeah. And then he came home yesterday from running the half marathon and mowed his lawn. And he doesn't have a riding mower.
Had to get that honeydew list done.
Well, congratulations to you, Brett, for doing that.
I was gonna say, I think he also had a Brittany Metzger from the high school.
Oh, did she?
Oh, she had it too.
Thank you. I knew that. There was somebody else. Thank you.
I made sure to wear my Westlake gear on uh Saturday, so.
Yeah. Well, cool. Okay, anything else? And we have board items. We don't have any board items. Okay, well, uh, that, do we have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the appointment? Employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion or compensation of an employee or official?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Turn into executive session at seven twenty-three P M. Kieran?
Yes.
Lamb? Yes. Lizinsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And there will be no action taken in the executive session?
Until?
Or?
After.
After. Okay, so we are a change.